Okay, folks, we're on the air and I want to welcome all of you this evening to our city council meeting, and this is the last evening one for December since we've adjusted the schedule for the holidays. Would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary, roll call.
Collins.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Coburn.
Here.
Okay, and first on the agenda, which is a revised agenda, so what was online probably didn't have this item, this was the only item that was added to the agenda, and this is a proclamation this evening. This is for the homeless persons Memorial Day, December 19th, 2014. Whereas every member of society, including individuals experiencing homelessness, deserves the dignity of safe, decent, accessible, and affordable housing. And whereas winter poses extreme hardship for inadequately housed low-income men, women, and children in Albany. And whereas in this season of generosity and sharing, citizens of Albany are encouraged to commit themselves to promoting compassion and concern for all people, especially those who are poor and homeless. And whereas in remembering those who have died without homes, the cause of ending homelessness remains urgent to prevent such deaths in the future. And whereas the shortest day of the year has been designated National Homeless Person's Memorial Day by the National Coalition for the Homeless and the National Health Care for the Homeless Council and is recognized by cities nationwide. Now therefore, as Sharon Canopamay, the City of Albany, Oregon do hereby proclaim December 19th, 2014, as Homeless Persons Memorial Day in Albany, Oregon, in recognition of the people who have died on our streets, in our emergency shelters, and in condemned or abandoned properties from ailments or conditions directly related to homelessness. I hereby ask all citizens to take a moment of silence in remembering those who have died homeless, and encourage our citizens to support local efforts to eliminate homelessness here. In witness whereof, I here on two place my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 10th day of December 2014. And so, December 19th at 10 o'clock, out on the City Hall Plaza, we will be having an event, and this is an annual event, that we have a little memorial service, and the names will be read of individuals that have been homeless, that have lost their lives this past year. And Helping Hands homeless shelters are part of this event, signs of victory, and our heart board is the one that's sponsoring this event. So we ask all citizens if they'd like to attend this event, it's December 19th at 10:00 a.m. And Marilyn, this is how many years we've been having this?
This is the fifth one.
The fifth one, yeah, so, okay, all right, thank you, folks. Okay, and next on the agenda, this is for communication, and this is our Public Safety's Facilities Review Committee's final report and recommendation. So we have, you know, former Senator Frank Morris, retired Senator Frank Morris, and retired Sheriff Dave Burright here that will be coming forward to give us the report.
Mayor and councilors, it's an honor to be here tonight and to put the final bow, so to speak, on the work that our committee has done. I'd like to make just a few general comments, and then Dave will focus a little more specifically on some of the recommendations that we're making. When Floyd called me and asked if I would join Dave to co-chair, I was delighted for that opportunity to do that, but I didn't realize how much work it would be. And in fact, many of, not many, but there were several of the committee members that said, "When I see your name come up on my phone again, I'm not going to answer." But we had a very good committee. I think if I was to describe our work, it was diligent, it was thorough, it was thoughtful. We didn't always agree, but we worked through processes to develop a consensus as best we could. And the overriding, there's some overriding themes, I think, in the work that we did. One is, first and foremost, what are the needs of our community with respect to these public safety facilities and the programs that they support? What really is the need of the community? And the other overarching theme, I think, of the committee is long-term. Do not put forth a recommendation that meets just the short-term needs, but think long-term. And I think that was born out of the circumstance that we find ourselves in with the existing police facility. It was built to available dollars, it was not built to long-term needs, and therein we have a problem. So we bring forward a recommendation, and in the, taking the risk of being audacious and a little maybe forward, we're hoping that the council will adopt these recommendations unanimously. I know that there's a great deal of appreciation on the part of the committee as we have progressed along, and you have taken progressive actions along the way, that that has been much appreciated. We did not have a consensus with respect to the ballot, whether it's one ballot or two ballots, but we did have a pretty strong majority of eight, essentially two would like to split it, one that would like to actually split the elections dates. So there was a pretty strong consensus with respect to how to conduct the election. But we did come to a unanimous recommendation that you see in the report with respect to where and how we should finance, where we should build, and how we should finance these projects. And our fondest hope is that you will join us in that unanimous conveyance to the public that truly the City of Albany needs these facilities. There's one other arching theme, I think overarching theme for the committee, and that was, how do we reduce the cost to the taxpayers? And I believe that we have started down that path, but you'll see in the allowance that is in the McKinsey's recommendation, that they've started out with a very large contingent allowance. And as it's designed, and the input of the chiefs and their staffs in the city as to how these buildings will eventually look and function, there should be opportunity to reduce that cost even further. And we're hoping that there's some way that even yet we can reduce the ask to the citizens in that bond levy amount. So I very much appreciate the opportunity. I love this community, I just really do. And I know every member of the committee shares that same conviction, and we're happy to be here tonight.
Thank you. Yeah.
Well, thank you. I guess certainly I echo Frank's statements. And what I'd like to do is just hit some of the highlights in the recommendation. You know, we know that you have them, you can read them, but especially just for the record and for public's sake, we'll just hit some of the highlights. And some things are, the committee felt very strongly about, and see if I can adequately express those. I'm going to the background history, so to speak. You all know what, you know, that it was on a year ago November's ballot and what happened from that. But as a result of all the last 13 meetings, I believe, that the committee has had, a number of recommendations came out, and one of the things that the group did was take, spent a lot of time looking at the programming needs, programming meaning exactly what the buildings needed to have in them and how they should function, and the square footage and that type of thing. And as a result, the recommendation is a actual reduction from what some of the programs did show at the time. The police station has had their programming document reviewed just within the last few months, and that was something that the committee had asked them to do, because we felt it was a little further out of date than the fire station. So as of today, it's relatively up to date. The fire station, however, probably needs to be reviewed again, and so we recognize that. But the committee also then, as part of that, felt pretty strongly that if there are any type of significant changes to the program that are being recommended by staff, that those come back to the council and make sure that you're aware of them and that everyone is in agreement that that's something that really needs to be done. As part of those reductions and what happened with the buildings, you'll recall that with the fire station, the committee is recommending the fire station stay where it's at. If needed, Sixth Street should be closed. It didn't say it had to be, we just see what the design comes up with. The preliminary design that McKinsey presented did show it being closed, and probably in all reality, with this number of square footage feet that's needed, that is something that's probably going to have to happen. And of course, you've already gone forward in acquiring some additional property that's needed north of Sixth Avenue. For the police department, again, the total square footage was reduced from what would be needed in the 40-year, 40 years out, which is what, as Frank mentioned, we looked at the long-term. We did not want our children having to deal with this right away. So there are some recommendations for reductions there. We also, however, recognize that there may be some opportunities to shell out space and not finish it, and get some cost savings that way, especially with the police department. Not so much the fire, but the PD, I think, has some opportunities there. So we've asked that that be closely looked at during the design development. The location of the PD was a tough nut to crack. There's a lot of feeling that that's where, where it is right now is where it should stay. And in fact, I think if the world were perfect, that's where the committee wanted it to stay too. But the reality is there's not enough property with what the city owns now, and we asked that the city staff go out and work to find out what it would take to purchase the minimum amount of property to make it a functional building on that site. And I give the staff a lot of credit. I think we've done everything we can to figure that out, but the price just did not match what was acceptable. It got to be so expensive. In fact, it was going to be more expensive just to build there, period, and then you add the additional costs to the properties that were there, it just didn't wash. And so finally, council and the committee agrees, it was time to move to the Pacific site. And so, as I said, I think the last time I was here, I'm really glad that you had that site in your back pocket, because it is, I think, going to work out very well for us now. As far as the funding strategy for these projects go, again, as I said before, the committee felt that ought to be a three-legged stool. Part of the dollars would come from the PepsiCo settlement, part come from urban renewal funds, and part come from a geo-bond. We were not able to identify any other reasonable ways to finance this kind of a project. The PepsiCo settlement, I'll talk about in a minute, the urban renewal funds, we talked about it at length, and the final recommendation was that the council, we would recommend the council and the URB use the maximum amount of funds allowed through a minor amendment to the area plan. We also, though, asked that as the buildings developed, there may be other opportunities for Cara dollars. For instance, in, you know, street reconstruction, or utilities, or things that would also naturally fit under the Cara umbrella, then we hope that we take advantage of those opportunities as well. But at the moment, it's about $1.4 million, and that's what you have decided on. And we understand that those dollars probably will increase a little bit between now and the time they actually need it. So there's some additional opportunities there as well. This evening, I think you're being, going to be asked to sign a contract in McKinsey, which is the architectural firm that was recommended to you. And that process, I think, worked out really well. A great deal of credit goes to
Bill Riles.
Bill, thank you. Bill Riles from the committee, who initially threw this idea out to the group. It was massaged a little bit, and we didn't really know how this was going to work. I think from the city's standpoint and from the citizen's standpoint, Albany, it worked great. Don't know that the firms that bid would, I don't know how excited they were, because they put a lot of time and a lot of effort into it, but you will reap the benefits from that. And we are really pleased with the selection of McKinsey. I just have a very good feel about them, and I think that's going to work out very well for you. One of the key components of getting that group selected now was to give us as solid a estimate, cost estimate, for the project as we could get. And that's one of the things that we now have. In the recommendation in the table, you'll see that we show total project costs of $24.4 million for the two combined. That includes a couple hundred thousand dollars in costs that will need to use for, that you will need to use to get the bonds issued and purchased and so forth. It does not include the costs for property that you've already acquired, just so we're really clear about it. But that $24.4 is, becomes the target then that we need to shoot for. So then, the committee had to look at, how do we get there from here? We know that we have $1.4 million promised from Cara, and maybe a little more, we hope there will be some more. The PepsiCo money was an issue then. There was approximately, there is approximately $22.43 million left in the facilities, public safety facilities portion of that fund. We are recommending that you add a little over two and a half more million dollars to that out of economic development to help us, along with $18 million in a geo-bond, to come up with the $24.4 for a total project cost. Needless to say, that generated some debate in the committee, because I don't think anyone in the committee that didn't support economic development. And Janet Steele is a member of our committee, you know, the chamber chairman, president, strongly involved in everything that has been going on in the economic realm here in the city. And that was tough. But our recommendation is that you take that $2.5 million now, because it is needed right now. You need to know how much would come in order to be able to set the geo-bond. But then, at your earliest opportunity, and we can't stress this enough, at your earliest opportunity, backfill money from the receivables that are yet to come in from the PepsiCo money, and you've still got the sale of the existing PD building at some point that could go in and backfill that as well. The footnote talks about the amount of money that we're talking about, and this was as of two or three, four weeks ago, our best knowledge. The current balance in the economic development, if we take the $2.5 out, it would leave a current balance of about $2.1 million, and there are current receivables estimated in the five and a half to $6 million range. So there's more than enough money to backfill that in. But we just need to make sure that, our recommendation is, you make sure that if you do use those economic dollars, that they're backfilled at the earliest opportunity. The method of construction, and I guess that concludes the funding piece. The $18 million, I should say, obviously is down from $20.3 a year ago. We'd love to see it even lower. And so as time goes on here, the costs are further defined, we would like to see it lowered. Now, there's going to be a timeframe where you have to make a decision and set the geo-bond. And that's sometime in February, is that correct? By February, hopefully, we'll have even a little better feel as the costs are refined. And so that would be an opportunity, perhaps, to lower that $18 million right there, yeah, lower the ask at that point. As opportunities to save money continue beyond that point, let's say that, just as an example, I have no idea what it may or may not be, that contingency that Frank spoke of from McKinsey is very significant. And as they keep moving and refining things down, they decide that instead of $18 million, they can do it for $17.5 and pick a number. If you've already set the 18, and that's what's hopefully approved, then our strong recommendation is that money, then, the extra half a million be set aside as repayment, early repayment for the bond. So we stay in faith with people in the city. Shouldn't be used for other sources. As far as the method of construction goes, committee didn't reach a decision. I think that, as I recall in that meeting, the ultimate end product was, you know, we need to leave that up to you, because it's going to depend on a lot of things that are going on at the time, and that's just going to be your call. The different firms that presented to us, I thought it was interesting that we got the entire continuum of ideas from them as to what they thought was correct. From design, bid, build, to, you know, design, build, to, I mean, CM, everything was in the mix, and each seemed to have their own idea as to what was the right way. McKinsey recommends the design, bid, build method, which is the traditional method. And so you will see that and hear that come forward later on. I think that probably hits most of the highlights. Have I left anything out, Frank?
Well, there's one sentence. "The committee's work is now complete, and the committee has dissolved."
Let's see, what do they have that we want? So, any questions? So, Floyd?
Not a question, just really an expression of appreciation for Frank and Dave and their leadership, but all of the other members of the committee too. I know that the process was not always easy, but just looking at those 13 separate meetings, and I just said, on average, they were three hours, sometimes they went four, and averaged people in attendance, that's over 430 hours of citizens taking a look at this question. It's not the council looking at it, it's not us reaffirming what was done, it's 430 hours of citizens with a real cross-section of skill and expertise in putting this thing under a microscope. If we had to pay for that, in terms of dollars and cents and hiring a contractor, we're somewhere between $30,000 and $50,000 for the work that they did for us. And I greatly appreciate both the two chairs and every member of the committee, you know, whether I agree with all the positions that each of them took or not, they really contributed. And I think that'll serve this community long-term.
Yes, I agree.
While the two chairs are here, I would also like to publicly commend Marilyn for the minutes that she wrote. I dearly wanted to be at the meetings, but said, "No, I need to be out of that mix." So reading that was like you were actually right there. And I thought that was a very good process to have, and be able to, they were long and voluminous, as the meetings were, and you could, you just got a feel for what was happening in the meeting. I thought that was wonderful, so, thank you, Marilyn.
It was, yeah. Real time-consuming, but it was a wonderful, wonderful minute, so.
Thank you.
Yep, Bessie?
Yeah, I just want to say, I told the guys, you know, thanks a lot, but I think it shows that the council wanted transparency in this process. And so, the committee that you put together was so diverse, and I think it just shows that, you know, we kept out of it because we wanted to make sure that it's what the citizens, you know, pretty much, pretty much wanted. I mean, you're not going to make everybody happy, you know, never. But I think what your committee did was just astounding. I really do, because like Floyd said, that's a lot of, lot of hours, a lot of commitment, and I don't think we can thank you guys enough, and the rest of the committee members that are here. And tell, if you ever see the other committee members, they probably won't ever talk to you again, but if you ever see them, you know, I think, give them our gratitude that what they've done hopefully will help us build facilities that this city needs so badly. So, thanks a lot.
Greatly appreciate it, so, it's wonderful.
Just as a parting reflection, we spent, what, 11 months, approximately, working on this. The next phase of this is really compressed. In a meeting with McKinsey this afternoon, we were talking about their experience in bond levies, and the typical bond levy preparation is 12 months, and we're down, literally now down to four. So the next phase of this, and the committee that Ron Looney and Mike Martin will be chairing and co-chairing, that work is just absolutely paramount, to get this, to take it through and provide information to the public that they would come, hopefully would come to the same conclusions.
Agreed. Thanks a lot.
I think there's reason to be optimistic, too. I think that we have addressed an awful lot of the concerns of people that I talked to and that the committee reported that had talked to them. I think people can see now what it is that you're asking for, and I hope that they understand how critical the buildings are needed. That was one of the first things the committee did, was to make, reach that decision. And that was, turned out to be pretty, pretty easy, actually. The fire station is pretty much a no-brainer. The PD, and Frank has put it so well, I think, in the past, it's harder, only because when you drive by that building, it doesn't look bad from the outside. It's not until you go inside do you realize the magnitude of the problem, and that it just is not fulfilling the city's needs. And so if we could, as many citizens as we can get to go and take that tour and see inside that place, it will help. You take that, combine it with the work that you're going to be doing the next two, three months, and the drawings, and show people exactly what it is that you're asking them to buy, and I think it's good. The former, the election last November lost by 668 votes, which is not a lot, really. And I've said, you know, I didn't vote yes, my wife tells me she didn't vote yes, my mom tells me she didn't vote yes. I'm pretty sure you got, I know you got mine, I'm pretty sure you got my wife's, and I'm pretty sure you got my mom's. So you're down to 665. So, again, talking to other citizens around the city, they've been very pleased with what's developed in the last year. So I think you're well on your way. But Frank is spot-on, there's not a lot of time to get the information out, and that's what has to happen. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you. Are there any other questions? Yeah, Floyd?
Well, I guess this is kind of an unfamiliar position for us. You know, they've made a series of recommendations, and I guess I'd just make a motion that we accept their report, and that we acknowledge the dissolution of the committee, and that we send a letter of appreciation and thank you to each and every member of that committee for the tremendous amount of work they've done for us.
Second.
Okay, all right. And did you get all that, Mary? Okay, any questions?
Want to dissolve it? I mean, they're doing such a good job, and I'm sure they got to, you really know each other.
When I dial them up now on my phone, they don't answer.
Oh, okay.
Change phones.
I'm not going to want my dog to ask Ray's house.
Okay, all right, there's a motion, and any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, thank you. Okay, motion carried, all right, thank you so much. Unanimous, yes, you got your unanimous, thank you. All right, okay, next is going to be a public hearing, and this is setting rates for water use, and I will call the public hearing open at seven forty-five PM. And Mark, you are going to do a presentation.
I have my own employees taking me to task even before we decide whether or not I'm going to raise rates. He's already beating on me.
Okay.
He wants a dollar a month raise.
No.
Eighty-three cents.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to present this report on the rate increase. You were briefed Monday night, and it was brief, I gave you a summary report. Tonight, the difference with my report is I'm going to give a little more of the information about what do we do in the water department. And I think oftentimes, we're a victim of our own success, and don't get me wrong, we want to be victims of our own success, we want to provide water, we don't want people thinking about, boy, am I going to get sick from what I'm drinking, or am I going to have water today or not? We want to be successful. But there's not a lot of understanding out there of what does it take to provide that, and so, the report tonight is going to fill in some of that information. So first, we'll discuss the current rate recommendation briefly, and then what I was just talking about is give a description of the utility, and what do people's utility bills buy them when they pay? And then give you a briefing on our updated five-year projection. As you know, each year, we look at our revenues and expenditures and update our rolling five-year projection, so we'll present that at the end. So, a year ago, in our projections, we estimated that a four percent rate increase was going to be needed at this time. As we looked at our current revenue and expenditures, we are able to cut that recommendation in half, down to the two percent that we're bringing you tonight. And we estimate that that two percent rate increase will generate approximately two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in the water fund over the next year. So, why is the rate increase, why could we cut that in half? Well, we've, as I've said before, we've worked hard at controlling our operating costs. In the past, since 2010 till now, we have averaging about a one percent rating, not rate, a one percent increase in our operation and maintenance cost. That includes all personnel increases, it includes energy costs, chemicals. We are working very hard to maintain those costs as low as possible, looking for efficiencies and improvements in our operations. We also have the good news that revenues for 2014 exceeded our projections. It was a hot summer, fairly long and dry summer, and that is good for the water business. So those two things combined have allowed us to come before you with a much smaller rate increase. Here's a graph that shows our history of operating expenditures over five years. As I said, the average, if you, if you take from 2009, 10 to 1314, it averages out to about a one percent increase in O and M expenses. So why do we need a rate increase if revenues were up and expenditures were down? And that's a very good question. If you'll recall, what we are shooting for is being able to generate enough money through our rates to fund one and a quarter million dollars' worth of capital investment into our water system. That's on top of our payments for debt, our operating costs, and what that does, it allows us to address the worst pipes in our system, reservoirs, pump stations, those sort of things, before they go into failure. It also helps us chase down leaky pipes so that we can reduce the amount of water loss we have in our system. So the impact of a two percent water rate increase for your average resident, it's between eighty-three cents and ninety-eight cents per month, based on their usage. Of course, that's gonna, gonna vary. If you have just a single person in their home and they're not using as much water, the impact is going to be less. But your average resident uses somewhere between six and eight units, so less than a dollar a month increase for your average residential user. So what I want to do now is make that connection between what the customers pay and what the customers get. This is, again, that educational process of what do we do with all that money? So I want to start out by summarizing how much the average utility customer pays per day for their sewer and water. This is not just water, now, we're talking only about water tonight, the water rate increase. But the bill that goes out is a utility bill that includes sewer and water. So your average customer looks at that as their, usually they look at it as their water bill. So the average customer who uses eight units of water a month pays three dollars and forty-one cents a day for their sewer and water. And what do they get? They get safe drinking water. People aren't getting sick, they don't have to worry about getting sick. We do a lot of work, and I'll get into some of those details in just a bit, we're regulated by the state, and so there's a lot of standards we have to meet. They get reliable service. It is very rare that our utility customers turn on the tap and there's no water there without some sort of notice ahead of time, if we're doing proactive maintenance. Does it happen? Occasionally, yes, it does, but not very often. It's, it's something that people have come to just, again, take for granted, they turn on the tap and the clean water is there. They get fire protection, that often is overlooked also. But many of the improvements we do, reservoirs, pipe sizing, pump sizing, is not just to get drinking water to people, but to assure that if there's a fire, we can get the water to the hydrants so that the fire department can fight the fires. So that addresses public safety, it also addresses people's pocketbooks, because with that reliable service, that helps in their insurance rates. And then economic development opportunities. Because of the investments that we have made and we continue to make in the system, we are available and ready to serve existing businesses that might be growing, new businesses that might be wanting to locate here in Albany. We don't have a moratorium because we can't serve business and growth, whether that growth be commercial and industrial or residential. So where does the money go? It goes into three, three silos. Debt repayment, we have to pay back those bills we, or the money we borrowed in order to make improvements significantly in water treatment. And then we have our daily operation and maintenance, keeping the system running twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And then the capital investment I spoke about in maintaining that system. And really, operation and maintenance and capital is a balancing game. If you don't spend enough money on your operation and maintenance, you're going to have, drive yourself to have significant capital investments to repair things that you've let fall into disrepair. And then if you don't invest some money on the capital side, your operating and maintenance costs will go up as you don't replace leaky lines and you have emergency replacements and things like that. So, the money on the debt side, we have an annual debt payment of just under two million dollars, and that debt will be paid off in twenty years. As you'll recall, we refinanced that debt recently, saving a significant amount of money over the life of the loan and in annual payments. On the operating side, there's a lot of different pieces and parts in our water system. The first I'm going to talk about is the canal, and I won't go through every single bullet here, you'll get the idea. But I do want to give the scope and breadth of the work we do. We, we, we do bank repairs, we have thirty-two miles of canal bank that we brush, two hundred and ninety dead or dangerous trees were removed, we have three debris racks that we have to clean daily, and we've collected six, over six hundred weekly water quality samples. That little schematic down there is our canal schematic with instrumentation and controls on it. Here's one of the debris racks getting cleaned. Here's a crew doing some brushing, that's, they are standing in the canal there. Access at times is challenging. Here's a before and after on bank repairs. We also have a hydroelectric system that we run. We ran that for over five thousand hours, the generator ran for over five thousand hours, and we produced, or created a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in revenue last year from that. Water treatment, as you know, we have two treatment plants. We have the Albany-Millersburg treatment plant up on Scrabble Hill, and we have our historic Vine Street treatment plant. Having two treatment plants gives us some good redundancy. Both plants are included and needed in our long-range plan, but if we do have a situation at one of the plants, we're very fortunate to have a backup plant to run on. As we run those plants, we do a lot of testing. Thirty to fifty in-house water quality analysis samples are run each day. And again, that's to meet those water quality standards and to assure people are getting clean, reliable service, and that we're running the plants efficiently. We do a lot of monitoring of water quality instruments. A lot of times, we have to go in and fix monitoring equipment, or we add monitoring equipment. Again, as we look for efficiencies, there's things that you had to do previously manually, and now through the advent of instrumentation computers, there, we look for ways to automate things. But those things take maintenance and upkeep. We do process control at the treatment plants. At Vine Street, where the water quality can fluctuate day to day, we have to do testing to make sure that, that we're using the proper set of chemicals and that we're optimizing our operations there. And even up at the Albany-Millersburg plant, where we use the membrane cells, those need to be monitored, and as those little cells go bad, we have to plug those off. And we, we have a replacement schedule for those that we fund annually. So, we won't get to the place where all of a sudden we have to make a big ask for money. We are putting money aside so that we can routinely replace those modules. Water delivery, or water distribution, you can see just a few here. I think it's interesting to look at hydrants, over eighteen hundred hydrants inspected and lubricated. Again, we don't want the fire department to pull up to a hydrant and not have it work, so we make sure those are working. We repaired sixty-two of those hydrants, we either installed or replaced five additional hydrants. We set meters, we replace meters, a lot of different work goes on. Here's a service line replacement that our crews are doing. Where we can, we do trenchless boring, that helps us save money and time, also helps save the street. Service line repairs, meters, a lot of times you think of just that little meter in front of your house, and that is the majority of the meters, but we do have some large meters for our industrial customers. Hydrants being replaced or installed. Water main repairs. They do break at times, and we do our best to systematically replace our oldest lines, but at times, things happen, and so our crews respond. And again, it's a twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five day a year operation. Some more things we do, we, we do water quality samples out in the system, we do water flushing to keep the water quality up. You'll see, last year, we produced over two-point-six billion gallons of water. Over eight hundred customer inquiries also. Here's a sampling, flushing, line locates that we're required to do when they're called in. And then we have our reservoirs that we inspect. So we also have engineering, and we have our capital investment. This past year, we, our staff designed and managed the construction over, of over a mile of water line replacement. That's through residential areas, you're dealing with existing streets, existing utilities, people where you've got to transfer their service from the old line to the new line, a lot of planning goes into that. Design and construction, we talked just last week about the emergency bank repair on the canal on Vine Street near the water treatment plant, and then we have treatment plant improvements. So here's just some pictures, you can see large infrastructure, large dollars. We also manage our water rights, we deal with state agencies on that. Water quality regulations, there's ongoing work by the state to find new regulations, and we deal with that, we try to anticipate them, we, we participate in discussions and try to get reasonable expectations for us and other cities. We maintain a model of our water system so that we're able, when a business comes in and says, can you provide me this amount of water at this location, we're able to answer that question. We have development proposals that come in that our staff reviews, we also help with construction inspection, we respond to citizens' inquiries. And then, the people who do maybe what's the least favorable job, our utility billing people, seventeen thousand, over seventeen thousand accounts are billed monthly. And that's sending bills out, collecting the muddy, money, starting and stopping accounts, so it's a lot of work. So that's the glimpse behind the curtain, what do we do? What does it take to keep that running? Now I'll just go into what our, our projection, our updated projection is. We refresh our revenues and expenditure estimates. Again, the revenue sources are primarily our rates that people pay. The next components are system development charges paid through development, a little bit through fees, and we do look for grants. No general fund money flows to the water utility. So we estimate with a two percent rate increase that we will generate eleven-point-seven million dollars in rate revenue next year. SDC revenues, as I spoke about on Monday, we've revised our estimate upward to three hundred thousand dollars annually. We've seen an improvement in development in the city, and so we're revising that estimate upward. Here, here's a glance at our five-year history on water revenues. As you can see, starting in 2011, 12, we've started to see a gradual increase in those revenues based on rate increases, somewhat based on a couple of dry summers, and I think an improving economy. Here's our SDC revenue that we've received over the last five years. As you can see, last year, we had over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we estimate that in this year, we will see that trend continue. We look at our debt service, which is fairly fixed, our operation, maintenance, and capital expenditures. This is a graph that shows how we are taking care of our debt service. Rates have to pay part of that debt service, but system development charges are also responsible for that, and until this year, it did not look like in our five-year rate projection that system development charge income was going to cover even their debt service portion. But with the improving economy, and with our adjustment in our estimates for revenue, it looks like those SDCs will cover their share of debt service. As I said- As I said, there are at times capital projects that have SDC components, and that could change the picture. But this is a good trend that we're seeing. Again, we target $1.25 million for capital expenditures, and we want to get there by This target, while it's large, and we believe it is adequate, it is less than what we had targeted back when we developed our water financial plan in 2000. Again, there are variables that we do not control. If we have a wet spring and wet cold summer, our revenues will decrease. If development tapers off, our SDC's revenue will decrease. We have union contracts that are up every now and then, and depending on how those go, or energy prices, things like that. So far, the trends are positive, and I think they're reflected in the good news that we're bringing tonight. So our new five-year rate projection is a 2% rate increase here for 2015. Previously, we had assumed or estimated a 4%. And then we're carrying that, those 4% rate increases out for the following five years. If the positive trends continue, there's a good chance those rate increases won't be that high. I cannot sit here tonight and guarantee that to you. I am hopeful, and I'm encouraged, but I can't guarantee that. This shows our five-year history of rate increases. 2010 and '11, we did not do a rate increase. And in fact, in 2009, we did not do a rate increase. We did a 3% rate increase in 2012. That was the first year we started this new plan with the five-year rolling projection. 2013, we thought we were going to need a 4%, and we were able to get by with a 2%. Did I say 14, 2013? In 2014, we assumed, or we had estimated a 5%, we only needed a 3%. And then this year, we had estimated a 4%, and as I said, we're only needing the 2% to stay on track. What we're doing is we're working to minimize things like this. You see here, water line breaks again, third time since 2006. And I'm not picking on Corvallis, because in a minute, you're going to see our own story. But that's a front-page article, and we would rather be forgotten than put on the front page. Here's a water line break in Albany that happened in September this year. As you can see, it was catastrophic. It didn't make the front page of the paper because it happened on a Saturday, and it happened on kind of a back industrial road. So we were fortunate. However, there was damage to an adjacent property owner. As I mentioned on Monday, we only damaged one property or flooded one property. It just happened to be a cardboard box company. So these impacts are real if we don't operate and maintain the system correctly and invest in the system. So Albany has those same risks. There's also the risk of contamination. This is from 2013. Baker City, Oregon. Cryptosporidium outbreak. And we certainly don't want the CDC coming to Albany and helping us out with our water system.
Go back one slide. What is that? That crypto?
It's an intestinal, see if I can get back here.
A lot of mountain water.
What's that?
A lot of mountain water.
Correct. It's an intestinal issue.
It's a parasite.
Yeah.
Hurt your tummy.
And how does something like that happen?
You get contamination in the line, whether it's something that gets in a reservoir that maybe you didn't keep birds or animals out of, potentially a water line break, or you don't treat properly.
Cryptosporidium is a parasite. The generic name is beaver fever. No reflection of on the university. It comes from the contamination from the raw water, and somewhere, the treatment system does not adequately capture it, treat it, disinfect it, and it gets into the distribution system.
We also want to avoid having bottled water advisories. You know, up in the Portland area, in the last year, I think there's been three or four circumstances where there's been boil water requirements. I cannot guarantee that that will never happen in Albany. Fortunately, it has not happened in the time I've been here. Not because of me, but I've been here a long time, is what I mean to say. And that is due to the good work that we do with the system.
And we don't have any open, open lake-style treated water sitting there?
That is correct. That is correct. What we want to do is keep our customers happy and healthy. And then I'm just going to close with this chart that you have seen that shows our comparator cities. This is what the comparator cities we've been using since we started this rate projection program. And you have Albany midway, about a third of the way down the page. And for eight units of water, which is about average for your average family using water, Albany is ranked as the 10th most expensive utility. At times, you hear, we hear, that Albany has the most expensive water and sewer rates in the state. And that's not true. We're not in the top third. We've dropped out of the top third, and that is because other utilities are having to make investments that Albany already has had to make, and their rates are reflecting that. To give you the trend, when we started this, Albany was the sixth, was ranked sixth in rates. Last year, we were eighth in rates, and now we're 10th, and that's in the eight units of water. So the trend is positive. And I guess with that, I'll conclude and ask if there's any questions. You are going to be taking public testimony, though.
Okay, questions? Yeah, Rich?
I know. We're trying to reduce the leak rate. I guess, what is the leak rate? What is the leak rate that we're kind of shooting for that's about the best you can figure you're going to be able to get? And at what point do we reach that?
So we are at about 17% is what our water loss is. The industry standard is 10%. And generally, our strategy has been to attack our old steel lines, because those have generally been the leaky lines. Now, water loss is not just leaks. Water loss can be because you have a meter that's not working, and so someone's getting free water, or it's not registering all the water. So we're attacking that through replacing old meters and going after the big leaks.
Do you have a timeframe when we might be closer to the norm?
It will be, at the rate we're going, you get a little bit of a curve where, you know, you hit the big ones first, and you start getting somewhat of a diminishing return. But it's out past our five-year window. I don't recall. We have our targets in the strategic plan. I should have looked at that before tonight. I can't remember, but we do have a target for each year.
But it's, you can see the point where they come together, is what I'm really asking.
Yep, yep.
Well, and we used, when we, I think when we adopted the water facility plan, we were at 25% water loss.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four percent, yeah. So we have made a big production.
Well, and I think, correct. And if we, industry standard is 10%. There may be a place where we say, you know, we're at 12, and we're not seeing much improvement. Do we want to continue to chase that? I mean, that'll be a decision that will have to be made. And we won't know until we continue to make improvement. At some point, you're going to see that line flatten out. But it is, 10% is the industry standard, and I would expect we could get there.
But the key point is, the capital cost never goes to zero. Because I don't remember the number of miles we have in the system, but if, given today's materials, the life of a pipe is somewhere between 50 and 100 years. So at best, you ought to be replacing 1% of your system every year. And so if we have 400 miles of pipeline, we ought to be replacing four miles a year. What we're doing now is playing catch-up on the system that we bought several decades ago.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
And we did have a, we did have a couple people that signed up that wanted to speak, and one is Walter Johnson. Would you like to come to the podium? And then, if you can also state your name for the record, for the tape to pick you up, and your furniture address.
Hello, my name is Walter Johnson. My last name is spelled J-O-H-N-S-O-N. My address is 1930 Southeast Main. I'm speaking today because I am a concerned citizen of this great city of Albany. When talking about water and raising the rates, we must remember the working poor and the effects that a price increase might have on these households. There are many citizens of the city who are considered the working poor, and these citizens oftentimes have problems paying the bills that they already have. And talking about just one increase, it does not seem that this will have any effect on these households, but we must also consider other utilities, food costs, and rent increases that these families will face in the upcoming years. Our great city does offer some relief to the disabled and to our seniors, but we offer nothing in the form of any help regarding water services to our working poor. The city does offer extensions, but these extensions are short, for short periods of time, and they are unlike the ones offered by the power company. And I would just like to take this time to say, I recognize the great job that Mr. Shepherd's doing, and I actually agree with the price increase. But I would like to ask the city that if they do this increase, that maybe perhaps an additional increase of a quarter percent would help fund an endowment that could help these working poor citizens. Two years ago, I prepared a document sent by Fish of Albany regarding this, and I brought copies of this today, and would like the city to reconsider this when they're thinking about price increases.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Yeah, any questions?
Did you have a document you wanted to pass out to all of us or something? Or this is?
I have five copies.
Do you want to just go ahead and give it to the clerk, and then she will go ahead and make extra copies for us?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, next is Mr. Cordier.
I'm Tom Cordier, 2240 Northwest Park Terrace in Albany. I'm here tonight to talk about the increasing costs of water and sewer. And I don't claim to classify the cost of the water and sewer service to be higher than some other city. What I'm concerned about is how the budget process is done, and how the cost, particularly the operation and maintenance costs of the water and sewer system are calculated. My sense is that the budget process is upside down from what I think it ought to be, and that the way it's done is the different departments fill out the boxes for the following year, and they just automatically put in the number of people that they have. And American Water Works and others have a process that looks at the true cost of utilities. And the way they do that is painstakingly long, but it's invaluable, because although Mark shows all of the litany of stuff that he does, and the 1,800 pumps, or whatever the data is, I don't know how frequently those tests have to be done. I don't know the number of man-hours that it takes to have it done. I don't know the travel time that it takes to get it done. And that roll-up of the costs, you establish, it's kind of like the fire and police thing. What are your needs? Well, what do we need to do by state law? You got to have 2,700 titrations or whatever the work schedule is. You lay that out in a document, and you say, how many people does, how many man-hours does it take? And when you roll up all those costs, now you come to what is classified as the true cost of service. And what you find is that you got a lot more people than you really need. Because people end up, they're like nitrogen molecules. They all, they fill up the space. And when you budget where everybody says, "Well, I've got 16 people this year in this department, so that's what I'm going to put down for next year." Very rarely does it happen that somebody at that lower level will say, "I can get along in this department with one less guy." Almost never happens. That's my experience. And I don't believe the city has ever done that in water and sewer, those tasks. And I think it needs to be done. It's painstakingly slow to do that, but it forces people to say, "What are you doing? And how come it takes you, oh, it takes you four hours to do that? Really?" And that, the development of those, the algorithms, doing the math, ends up defining how many people you really need. The rest of it is, well, we don't want to have bacteria in the water, and everybody says, "Yeah, that's right." But that doesn't still tell me, how many people do you really need? And the city does a good job with the financial side, but in the operations side, I don't see that being done. And I would encourage the city to do that before you do the next rate increase. I'm pleased that it's not 4%, that it's 2%. And I know you are. But until you do that kind of roll-up, you don't know what your true costs are. You just know how many people you got. You don't know how many people you need. And I'm speaking from experience. I'll tell you a short story. 1975, Wachang, I was asked to take a division director's position in the middle of the plant. That plant, arc melting, EB melting, all that stuff, EB welding, that plant had run four-shift rotation for 22 years. When I got there, new kid in the block, I did the math after about six months. Oh, we got to make so many ingots. What's the pump-down time? What's the melt time? What's the cooling time? What's the load time, the unload time, all that stuff? How many furnaces do we have? How many people do we need? Guess what? Went a five-day shift, three shifts a day for five days. And there was no driving force to do that at that time, because we were on cost plus fixed fee with the US military. And why would you want to ever get more efficient when you're getting your costs covered plus a fixed fee? There's no driving force to do that. But our commercial enterprise was coming on, and we had strong competition from Cezus and other plants in the world, and we needed to get into the commercial nuclear realm. And that's how we made the transition. We got much more efficient, because we understood what our costs really were. And it's incrementally rolling all those elements that you have to do, times the number of frequencies, all that. You know what I'm saying. I won't repeat it. And so I would just encourage you to do that. And there are some documents out there already that are used by other public there already that are used by other public utilities to, as a primer on how to actually do that and do it well, and I would encourage you to do that. Any questions?
All right. No. One thing that we did do, though, when we updated our facility plan, it is a very long process, and I think it was, what, Bill, three years on that committee? Takes a lot of staff time, takes a lot of cost to go through those studies, and we did a very thorough study back then-
Yeah, I wouldn't even say that it takes, that it would be a staff issue. You might want to hire a consultant to do it with the staff.
And we did on this. Cost money to do it, and we went through all of those staffing needs. We went through all those facility needs, so we-
In water and sewer?
Yes, uh-huh, all of that's been done. And so we turned around, and we have adopted those plans, and that's what's been implemented, and that's what, staff follows those plans. So, and I trust our staff-
So, you're saying that you've already done that?
We did our-
Could I hear that from Mr. Shepherd?
Updated our facility plans. Yes, we did. We have water and wastewater.
Yeah. The facility plan is a different issue. I talked about a process, and it's not a facility plan. It's a process of understanding true costs.
Right.
I would like to have Mark really address, because, Tom, I think we have done a piece of that. It wasn't the American Waterworks Association, but it was the American Public Works Association-
Okay.
-that they brought people from other utilities in and audited our functions.
Okay.
Are you, what are you doing? Are you doing it the right way? And I forgot all the criteria, but Mark would have the details.
Okay.
And they came through and gave us an APWA certification that we were now meeting all of those pieces, so.
Well, I will add that during the 2012 budget process, we cut four positions out of operations. We eliminated seven supervisory positions. And if you'll remember, last budget meeting, we reinstituted two of those seven supervisory positions. We cut to where we found the bottom, and whether that satisfies Tom or not, I don't know. But we certainly can discuss this more. We do track things through our work order system as far as when does someone get assigned something, what equipment did they use, and when did they get it finished. So, there is information that we have on that, and we do look at that.
Okay. Good. Maybe I would ask if Floyd could maybe meet with me at some point and go through that study, because I'm totally unaware of that.
Yeah, I think that the point that Tom's making is one that I, as a person who's been in the industry for 40 years, support. You always got to ask the question. It's not an easy question to ask, but if you really want to run your business, you ask those questions. And I think to a large extent, we have. This is something that we just generally don't have out of the public document.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else that would like to speak on this item under this public hearing on the water rate increase? All right. Not seeing anyone. With that, I will close the public hearing at 8:28 PM. And counsel, you do have a resolution that's on page 20.
I would move for the-
Yeah, do you have any questions? Yeah.
Was the reduction for us, you had to accomplish through retirements and that kind of thing, or did we have to?
We had one layoff. We had one layoff. We had several people who chose to leave the city, but only one layoff of those four.
Too bad we have to leave people off.
Yeah.
Okay. I would move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
All right. Any more discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right. Thank you, folks. Next is Business from the Public. Is there anyone here that would like to bring an item forward? Yes, Tom?
Now, when we finish talking about water, I'll go get some water.
It's safe.
The Public Safety Facilities Review Committee, the report that you received tonight was a good one, and I thought the two co-chairs did a great job presenting that, and I told that to them. One of the issues that was brought up really early in our meetings, which never got resolved, because it tended to be outside of our scope, was the issue of efficiencies of the operations in the design and, of the design of the buildings that are going to be constructed. We didn't talk about that at all. We talked about the needs, space needs and office needs and all that kind of stuff, equipment needs and bay size and all that stuff. But we didn't talk, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't talk about the desire to build a building that it can be efficiently run. For example, a gentleman told me recently that he had a building designed, and he didn't pay much attention to it, but it turned out it took four people to go around and unlock the doors. So, that drives up his operating costs. And so, we didn't talk about that. We talked about HVAC improvements, you know, the state-of-the-art kind of stuff for HVAC and the operating systems, and how to do the card-lock door stuff, and those kinds of efficiencies, but we didn't talk at all about how to design the layout so that people can multitask and be able to reduce headcount. In 2006, the taxpayers approved a $0.95 per thousand public safety levy, and in 2012, that was increased by 21%, so that now it's a $1.15 per thousand, which this year it'll generate about $2.6 million for the operation, for the fire and police. Between fire and police, I had never looked at it before, frankly, but it turns out, fire and police, the cost of those two systems are about $24.5 million a year, and most of that is headcount. And so, what I'm asking the council to do, see, I haven't, I'm seeing, I'm looking at this item E, award of contract, that Stacy wrote up, and I have a copy of that. But what I don't know is whether the, there's a line item in the contract that says, "By the way, we want you to design this thing so that we can run our people efficiently." And that, to me, is just as important as having the state-of-the-art water heater or HVAC AC system. And we saw some of those items when we went through the fire buildings over in Lebanon. Is it Lebanon?
Syo.
Yeah, thank you. Anyway, we saw some of those, and the guy who was leading that charge, those were really important to him, because they have a volunteer system, and so they want to use their people efficiently. So, I would just ask you to think about having them people efficient, because if we don't, in another five years, you're going to come back probably with another public safety levy. And that, one that passed in 2012, certainly added to the compression woes of the county, and it will do it again. And so, I don't, I'm hoping we won't see, okay, now we have these new buildings, and in particular, there's some wording changes about whether we're going to have jail cells in the building, or whether they're holding cells, or whether they're detention cells. And so, there's a, I don't know what the ground rules are for those things, but I know that you can't just put people in a room and lock the door and walk away and leave them. And so, I would encourage you to understand how those cells are proposed to be used, and understand the cost of them. I would encourage you to talk to the municipal judge, Robert Scott, and get his sense about that, so that you can roll in those operational efficiencies into a design platform, because I don't think it's been addressed.
Did you bring this up with the facilities committee that you were on?
We brought it up way early in the game, and the way it worked out was, well, we're trying to get a bond measure passed, and we're going to try to do that, and in the best way we know how is to really understand what's needed. But in terms of operational costs, we didn't, that was out of our charter. That's how it was, that's how I think it was resolved.
Well, and I don't know if this gets at all of your question, but even in the proposal stage, when the different architectural firms were here-
Yeah.
-they looked at, I think they call it adjacencies, you know, which people work with other people, and, you know, so the firefighters, where do they, where do they sleep? Where do they eat? How do they get to their vehicles? So, even at that stage, they're looking at that, and I believe that is part of the whole design, and I think the chiefs will be able to speak to that more. But again, I don't know if this gets at your whole question, but there was, how are people functioning in this building? And that's what they start with before they even put walls down. They're looking at, you know, patrol versus detectives.
And I saw, excuse me, and I saw some of that, so it's not a brand-new concept. I don't claim that it is. But it's something that we ought to pay attention to, because out of the $24.5 million, we get $6 million, I said it wrong, $2.6 million in tax levies, and I'm hoping that we wouldn't have to do that again if we designed the buildings right.
Yeah, we'll leave that to the professionals. They know what they need in their buildings. They're the ones that have those jobs. None of us up here are police officers or firefighters, and either are you, so we will leave that to the professionals. They'll know what to do.
Yeah, well, that's a nice panacea, but, I mean, if that's, I don't appreciate that comment after having served on the committee, and the fact that we didn't address it, and I'm asking that it would be addressed, and I know it has been to some regard. For example, one of the guys said, "We don't want them to, the patrol people that are going out on patrol to have to go through the main office to get to their turnout station."
And I think-
So, some of that stuff is in there, and I would just ask you to kind of heard that a little bit.
We got the recommendation from the facilities committee of what all they wanted to review, so-
And you have mine, too.
And also, I wanted to mention that the, that our police and fire levy first was, first approved by the voters in 2002.
I didn't-
Yeah.
I don't dispute that. I just said you did one in 2006.
Right, yeah.
I think-
So, people know that it's been since 2002.
I think one of the points that Tom is making is, the charge that we give to our staff and to our consultants is to balance capital cost versus operating cost, because you can invest a lot of capital money to minimize operations, or if you don't have capital, your operations can go up. And the charge that we have given to staff is, keep an eye on future cost.
Yeah.
Do what you can within the budget defined to minimize those long-term costs. The adjacency question is only one component, but other components are, you know, what type of HVAC, passive solar, other things, and I think we've given that clear message to our staff, both in each department and to the engineering folks, who will transfer that to the consultant.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Anyone else from Business from the Public? Okay, all right. Thank you, folks. Okay, counsel, next you have the adoption of the consent calendar. If there isn't any items that you need to have pulled off for discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. And next is the award of the contract, and this is for the professional services contract for preliminary engineering for the police and fire station. Actually, this isn't for any action requested, so, and is Stacy coming forward with this, or?
She certainly can give you a briefing. The reason action isn't required is because the contract value doesn't reach the $150,000 limit that requires a council approval. But we thought, because of the nature of the contract, we'd bring it before you for your information, bring it out there, you know, again, in an effort to be transparent.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am here to answer any questions if you do have any questions regarding the memo. It's information regarding award of the contract to McKinsey for Phase One design work. The Phase One design work, it's going to include site investigations in order to develop concept, design plans. McKinsey's also planning to do visioning and public outreach, which they discussed during their presentations, during their interviews, and that'll involve providing different designs that they could include different colors, brick versus stucco, that the public will be able to put stickers on to say what they like, to get input from the public. After the visioning and public outreach, McKinsey's going to finalize the concept design, and then with that, they'll be able to develop a cost that we can use going forward with the bond measure. All of this Phase One work is scheduled to take place in a really short timeframe, so that we'll have a really good cost estimate and a design concept prior to the end of February, which I believe is the date we're targeting to file, file the bond measure. And I don't know, Mr. Cordier's gone, but their proposal does include, they'll be doing lifecycle costs for HVAC and other mechanical systems, and then also working with the chiefs and the patrol staff and the fire staff to make sure that there are efficiencies in the adjacencies that they identify in the buildings. Again, this is just for Phase One design. We did get costs for the second phase, which would be completing the design and the contract documents, and then the third phase would be for construction services. And the cost, I thought, came in really good. I don't know if you were all given the cost that we provided at the public facility safety review meeting, where we explained to the committee that we were going to be recommending, awarding the design for both police and fire to McKinsey, but it came in at a 10% cost savings when you combine the two projects, comparing it to the cost that was included in the proposal. So, we were really pleased to see that. The 10% cost savings ends up being one approximately, almost $200,000. And former Senator Morris, I think, mentioned that it does include a pretty hefty contingency at this stage. It's a 20% contingency, and so hopefully, we'll get that reduced as the design gets developed, and there'll be maybe even more cost savings.
Yeah, Stacy?
Question, Stacy. And I'm sure we've probably covered this before, so bear with me. It says the budget impact. Okay, so we're talking about Phase One, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then it says funding for Phases Two and Three will be determined. And maybe I'm just not remembering, but have we discussed that? Like, is that going to be part of the bond measure, or is that what it is? So, this is only the design, and then we get into that after the bond measure passes. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I understood. Thank you.
Okay. You have any questions? All right. Okay. Well, thank you. Okay, next- Okay, next, counsel, is approval of the contract increase. This is for the North Albany Road reconstruction. This is on page 95. Mark, did you want to?
Well, Stacy's here to answer questions if you have them. If you'll recall, the North Albany Bridge design has been somewhat of a shifting target in that our initial hope was to just use the existing structure, you know, maybe widen it. And it's an iterative process with impacts to the floodway, and it ends up we have to replace the bridge. And so the cost for all the design work on replacing the bridge is higher than just doing, you know, adding on to the existing bridge. Stacy, I don't know if you have other information you want to share, if I've captured that. Am I close?
No, you're, yeah, I think you captured it, you know, you're spot on. What happened is, we did want to use the existing substructure of the bid, the bridge, and just use that to raise the existing bridge. When we did the floodplain analysis, we realized we weren't going to be able to meet the floodplain criteria with the existing footprint. We needed a 65-foot span. We did talk with WH Pacific. They looked at the cost, and they thought they could do a new bridge within the existing budget. But then they just missed some costs. What happens when you have a 65-foot span? We couldn't use a precast slab at that point. If we did, it had to be a thicker slab, which means there's more impact to adjacent properties. We would have had to have built more retaining walls, acquire more rideaway. And so at that point, we decided to do a steel structure bridge, which required significantly more structural engineering costs.
Okay, questions? Bill?
So Stacy, the original contract, was that in response to a request for a proposal?
It was, yes.
And then, does the city have some way to quantify the additional costs? Are you just at the mercy of WH Pacific, or how's that work?
They do break out their costs. So at the point when we realized we were going to be building a new bridge versus just raising the existing one, we had 30% plans. So their funds had been expended, I think it was around $20,000. And we just got into the design, and I, WH Pacific just simply didn't capture the cost, the extra costs that are going to come with a new bridge. There's a lot more inspection costs, because you're going to be driving pile versus just building on to the existing substructure. And then the steel beam bridge really caught us unaware. They were thinking they were going to be able to use a precast section, but at that 60-foot, five-foot span, you have a thicker slab. And so you bump into a thicker slab, and that was going to really impact the design.
Do they provide you with a breakout of hours for these costs? It's going to take a structural engineer or geotech?
It is broken out into geotech, structural, inspection services, so we do have a detailed breakdown.
Well, and I can understand from the complexity of what you described, how there would be some additional costs. I think it's always kind of tough to, 81,000 sound okay to everybody?
It's, yeah, it's a hard number to swallow. It's a lot of money. But staff has looked at it, and it is going to be what's needed to finish the project.
Well, it sounds like they did give you a breakdown of, like you say, those different aspects of it, and it all adds up, so, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, and we'll need to have a motion on this item.
So I'll make a motion that the, I guess the appropriate language would be to increase the contract amount to WH Pacific to cover the additional engineering costs related to redesign the bridge.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, motion carried. Thank you, Stacy. All right, next is the Dumbek Lane Domestic Water Supply District.
Yeah, so we're seeking your authorization to enter into these new agreements, which there's copies in the packet. There is not a substantive change in what they're paying for, how we're billing them, or anything like that. We actually were approached by Dumbek. When the original agreement was developed, it was a prospective agreement in that we were entering into this, and there were certain things that the Dumbek Water System had to do, and Albany promised to do. Many of those things we've already done, and they're complete. And so this is really kind of cleaning up some of those leftover things. The agreement was due for renewal, I believe it was in 2016. Dumbek came to us early and just asked that we review this. Our staff has reviewed it. We've reviewed it with the city attorney, and then the Dumbek Board has reviewed it. We went back and forth, making sure that we were comfortable with the language, they were comfortable with the language, so we're asking for your approval to enter into this updated agreement. Again, none of the, we're not changing how we're billing them or anything. It was really a housekeeping item.
Okay? All right, questions?
Just an observation and comment. Back in the '70s, Dumbek was one of the 13 water districts in North Albany that were looked at to be combined with the county service district. 12 of the 13 did, Dumbek did not. The last time I talked to one of the residents, their monthly water bill only was $122 a month. They have significant capital replacement costs.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, we should.
Okay. And so what you'll need is a motion to enter into a revised service agreement.
Move adoption of the requested action. Second.
All right, any discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, okay, business from the council. And Bessie, anything?
Well, only one thing. Mark, and I'm glad you're here, says, whenever we have a downpour of rain, a lot of rain, whatever, on Pacific, across from Pops Branding Iron, that always floods. Now, can you tell me, is that ODOT's thing, or is it our thing? I mean, that is, I mean, it's so easy to hydroplane on that, because you never know how deep it's going to be. But it's every time we have a deluge of rain, it's, I think it's a dangerous thing, and I just wondered what we can do about it.
So it would be an ODOT issue. What I'm not sure of is whether the ODOT storm drain system connects to the city storm drain system. We could do some looking there, and we could evaluate our storm drain system. And if there's some cleaning we can do there that might help, we certainly could do that. If it's a restriction in the ODOT facilities, it's something staff could bring up with ODOT staff.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good thing, because.
So you're saying it's on the south side of Pacific Boulevard, across from Pops Branding Iron? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes. When you're coming, not when you're going up, I think, let's see. I remember which, but yeah, it's just always, you know, nice.
So if you're, if there's an issue on Ninth Street, where you're coming down off the overpass, near At Home Furniture, we are working on that issue. That has to do with some improvements that At Home Furniture did, where they impacted drainage. So we're actually currently actively working on that, trying to get At Home Furniture to resolve that issue.
Yeah, so no, it's not that one. It's closer to Pops.
Just a common history, about five years ago, maybe a little more, there was a catch basin up by the Chevron Station that was flooding. Staff investigation found that that catch basin was installed with the couplet, and the contractor simply forgot to hook the catch basin to the storm drain.
Oh, my.
Oops. That's a major oops.
Anything else, Bessie?
That's all.
Okay, Bill. Okay, Dick?
Yeah, I want to, can you hear me, Hasso? How's that? Okay. Hasso complains continually that he can't hear me talking, so I'm trying to be better. And I want to mention that the annual Christmas Parlor Tour is next Sunday, and I don't know how, but somehow I agreed to be on it. So if you wanted a chance to take a look at my old house, here's your chance. And the proceeds go to repair the city's own Monteith House, the oldest, and the original frame house here in the city of Albany.
I had it down on my, to bring that up about, Dick was going to be allowing his house to be on that tour again, and he did, what was that, three or four years ago, was it? You had it on the tour?
No, it was only three years ago.
And it was one of the highest turnouts we've ever had for the Christmas Parlor Tour, and Dick had 1,000 people come through his house. So just imagine, 1,000 people walking through your house in an afternoon. It was just, it was, it was wall-to-wall, people just, you couldn't stop. You came in, and you just had to make your path through that house, because if you stopped, you were almost going to be just kind of plowed over. But it was a great year for turnout. Last year, we had the snowstorm, so we didn't have as much of a turnout last year. But Dick, we, you know, want to commend you for opening up your house to the public again, and I recommend everybody to come to the Parlor Tour. And Dick has a very beautiful restored historic home, so, yeah. So thank you so much for allowing your house to be on that tour again. And I'll be there to help you out.
Yeah, Sharon has agreed to help, so here's your chance to twister her arm.
Yes, so, okay. So, okay, Rich, you had an item?
I have a couple 319 items. On November 17th, at a work session, there was a discussion on transient lodging tax, and it has become obvious that there has been some confusion about what was voted on by some folks. So what it says is, "Motion to agree in principle with the draft proposal," and that's the one that was sitting there, "including a potential added pay incentive for increasing overnight stays to have staff talk to county to see if they agree with the principal report back past 5 to 1," with Councilor Olson voting no. There has been a question of how much money it was. Staff, I think, went with $50,000. It is the consensus of the, of the five people who voted, that it was in fact $40,000 or $40,020, plus an additional possible $50,000 for performance, and that staff was supposed to come back with, or go to the county and make sure that it could be transferred to them, and keeping our interests, such as, you know, it's only taking care of that specific item, and when it gets paid, and how it gets paid, et cetera. So at this point, I would like to have those people who voted yes to confirm that that is in fact what they remember.
Yes, it is, for me.
I do.
As best as I recall.
Right.
Exactly.
Have to get the audio from the work session.
There we go.
I think that adequately represents the discussion. We said, "Go talk using this document to see if you can come to have an agreement that incorporates these principles and bring it back to us."
Yeah.
And the principles were the $40,000 plus an incentive program that could lead to a one-year initial cost of up to $90,000.
I think that's, and if you recognize all five people said yes. Second item, the time capsule sitting over there, tie 12, is all filled with kid stuff and stuff from restaurants and businesses and individual people, and I may have put something secret in there, I don't know. But it's all welded up, it is now, has been delivered to the city, and I no longer have to worry about it.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
Hiding is closed, you're washing your hands.
Yeah, no more.
That thing is sealed up.
And the final item, it is just a personal thing that I have a frustration with about the way people view things. I mean, you go back to St. Louis, and there was a tragedy that happened, and people point fingers without knowledge. They say, gee, the police officer did this, or did that, or did something else, and one of the grand jury comes back. The, the local, local people riot and take stuff, and, you know, I guess I would, here in Albany, I see us doing the right thing. A week ago, we had people come before us and say, gee, you need to pass this thing about some stupid stuff that was on people's cars on Veterans Day. And what came to my mind was, well, let's see, the last hate thing that I knew of in Albany, and I may be wrong, but the last one I knew about was a young kid who it was said was a homosexual, and had three people beat the hell out of him. Now, did he get away with it? No. The police tracked him down, the DA prosecuted him, he was in court, and they got sanctions for it. So, I mean, it would be nice if we dealt with things as they are, instead of just the perception. I mean, from my perspective, you know, if you're like the kid in, back east, if you had, you know, you're six foot four, you weigh 293 pounds, there were a whole bunch of things that came up to him getting shot. He could have, one, not been a guy who was a robber. He could have not, when the owner of the place said, hey, don't do that, he could have not choked him and thrown him down on the ground. He could have not walked down the middle of the street, and when the police officer said, hey, get over to the side, he could have not said some explicative deleted. When the officer pulled in front of him, he could have not attacked the officer, he could have not tried to steal his gun. And when he got shot inside, he could not have run off, and when the officer, whose job it was to tell him to stop, to take him into custody, he could have not charged the guy. I mean, we point fingers at people who, you know, I would not want to have to make the choices officers make. And I think they make them all the time, and I think 99.9999% of the time, they do it just right. I have absolutely no fear. If I see flashing lights behind me, I say, yes, sir, no, sir, what you doing? I mean, you do what they tell you, nothing happens. Anyway, I've got on my soapbox, I'm now finished.
Okay, thank you, Rich. Ray?
I'd like to commend Hasso for his most recent column on the value of libraries in the community. I read books all the time, I know Hasso does, and I strongly agree that libraries are needed in every community. Physical edifice is not something just on the internet, so, thank you.
That's the one we're going to close, isn't it?
Yeah. No, yeah, thank you. Dick's worked hard to keep Carnegie Library open all these years.
More than once.
Yeah, so, okay, all right, Floyd?
No, thank you.
Okay. And I didn't this evening, and I have.
I just have one, one brief thing here. I brought to you some updates about Bonneville Power Administration's plan to rebuild their lines between Albany and Salem that run through North Albany. I got a letter here just on Friday, I'm sorry, Monday, and they have a schedule. They have two different lines. One, they're planning to move forward with reconstruction of that line between, it's July of 2015. um, it's July of 2015 and November 2015, and on the second line, they'll be the following year, July 2016 through November 2016. So, I, I don't have any details on their plans, but they are, uh, planning to replace all the poles. They talk about some access roads, I don't know if those are inside Albany at all, but in about a year, we'll start seeing some, uh, movement by Bonneville Power Administration on those lines. Just information.
So, as it applies to us, it's the BPA line that runs through North Albany, and comes across.
Correct.
So, in many cases up there, that easement is in people's backyards.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, all right, um, anything else? Staff hat, Marilyn?
I have three things.
Okay.
Going back to the, the library, uh, and Dick's open house, it all ties in. Uh, the Carnegie Library will have an open house this Sunday, at the same time as the parlor tour, from two to seven. Doesn't cost anything, you don't have to have a parlor tour ticket to get in, uh, it's just, uh, come in and see what we have, have, there's some refreshment, staff will take tour, do tours of the building, but it's all part of their ongoing 100th anniversary celebration for this year. Um, on Friday, I'd like to invite you to put on your hip waders and join staff and representatives of the Corps of Engineers, the National Weather Service, and, uh, so, one of the other...
Is it FEMA?
Hmm, possibly FEMA.
I believe.
Bunch of, bunch of folks are gonna be down at Monteith Park at the stage. We'll be installing three high-water signs that designate where the flood levels reached at, near Ellsworth Bridge in 1861, 1964, and 1996. This year, of course, is the 50th anniversary of the Christmas flood of '64, and the signs are, we got, had the signs for a couple of weeks now, we're gonna put them up, and the people will be on hand to explain the importance of flood mitigation work that has been done since those floods, and remind everybody that dams can only do so much, the water's still gonna get high, it won't get as high, but be prepared and, and...
So what time is that on Friday?
11:00 AM.
11:00 AM.
Friday. And you'll have to use the Ferry Street entrance to the parking lot at the senior center, because the railroad is doing, um, tie and rail removal and replacement that day. They're pulling the stuff on Thursday and replacing everything with the asphalt on Friday. We had no, that was their, that's their thing, we're doing our thing, we didn't know about it. Um, also, uh, Woodland Square, Innovative Housing Incorporated is, um, doing a renaming of Woodland Square. They want to give the, the project a fresh start, so they're doing a contest for people who want to rename it, come up with an idea, send it to Julie Garver at Innovative Housing, I have her email address, it's in a, it's in the press release we sent out today. Send it by Christmas, you could win 200 bucks, and give the neighborhood a new name, or give the, the project a new name. It is coming along beautifully, the first two buildings will open in February. Take a drive by, if you need a, if you need a, a mood lifter, drive by that project, it's really changing that part of town.
It was a nice design.
Yeah.
I told people from the very beginning, it was a regular, kind of a charrette, you know, group of, um, planners together, and, um, community people to really come up with a nice design, and boy, I think it really shows, so... But I do like the name Woodland Square, so, I just used it for that project, and a lot of people I mentioned to, Woodland Square, they, they don't know it by that name.
Hmm.
Because remember, it was felony flats, for most people, is what they call this. So, yeah, they, um, they didn't really know it was Woodland Square, but, yeah, I kinda liked that name, so...
What's wrong with Woodland Square?
Yeah.
Don't ask me?
I know, I'll, I'll contact Julie, so, yeah. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I'm done.
Any other staff? So, all right, um, so, counsel, December 15th, Monday, our, um, work sessions at 5:00 PM that day. Um, I will be up at the, um, State for the, um, Oregon Rail Leadership Council meeting all that day. And, um, then we don't meet till, we have our Christmas holiday vacation time, so then our next meeting will be January 12th, and then regular session, or that's a work session, then regular session's January 14th, and with that, we're adjourned.